Good evening, this is the Virtual Board of Selectmen Meeting for Monday, May 18. At this time, all participants will be muted, and we're going to leave the meeting open just because we're going to get some new attendees tonight. As indicated on tonight's agenda, and currently on Channel 18, we will be inviting people for public comments. To get in line to speak, you must send an email to comment@town.harwich.ma.us. At the time of public comment, those emails will be taken in the order they were received. Those emails may be sent at any time. It'll take me a second to start the recording here.
This conference will now be recorded.
And the meeting is here, sir.
Thank you, Scott. My pleasure to open the Harwich Board of Selectmen's Meeting for May 18, 2020. I'll open by roll call of our selectmen. Ed, I'll start with you. Michael?
I'm here.
Steve? Don't forget to unmute Steve, star six.
Here.
Don is, I'm hoping he'll join us momentarily, and I'm here. So we will open, and our first on the agenda is a COVID-19 update. I'll turn that over to Joe. I do note that Senator Sears joined us for some updated information and some discussion points. But I'll turn it first to Joe and to Megan, and Senator will time in with you as we go.
Larry, thank you, and to you, members of the board. I would suggest, in the interest of everyone's time, and to try everything, tie everything together, I would recommend that we scrap the briefing itself, and if the board take the whole business item out of order first, that will allow us to hear from Senator Sears on the Cape reopening group, and as Megan and I to speak about Governor Baker's documents that were released today, if the board's willing to do so.
That's fine with me. That's it.
Agenda items, one by one, if that works.
Please, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. We'll go through numbers first. Massachusetts' numbers, of course, have increased. We are looking at yesterday's numbers at 86,010 and 5,797 deaths. And in Barnstable County, we're up over at 1,150 with 93. Good news is, we have not changed our numbers here in Harwich. We're still at 107 in your packets. I did provide you with some graphs with when the numbers started to increase, when they jumped, and it's mostly related to the Wingate long-term care cluster. We have 67 patients or/or staff that are connected to that one facility, and quite a few deaths, seven confirmed, still waiting on some other death certificates, but it could be up to 12 with the fatalities related to COVID at that facility. And we are still doing daily check-ins with Wingate and the Department of Public Health. They have a surveyor, they call it, someone that calls in and asks them some specific questions about PPE needs, staffing needs. The last I knew, the National Guard was still there providing staff support, because they still had quite a few staff members down. So the numbers are looking the same as they were last week. The good thing is, the hospitalization rate is down to 3% from four last time we spoke last week, and that's one of the indicators that will allow for some reopening eventually. So we'll go into the reopening plan that has a lot more details on what we're looking for in order to move from phase to phase, so we'll stop with numbers for now.
Thank you, Megan. Representative Peake has joined us, welcome. Sarah, and...
Just in time.
Just in time. You and Julian, please join in this discussion. Joe, I'll turn it back to you then, and Megan, I'll think I'll defer questions to you till we get more towards the end of the discussion, if that's okay.
Larry, am I on now? Can you hear me?
You're on now, I can hear you now. Welcome, Don.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it right over to our legislative delegation for the updates that they have, and, excuse me, then Megan and I will go through specifics for the town.
Great. Thank you, Joe, and it's great to be with all of you. Sarah and I are doing a bit of a roadshow tonight. In normal times, it wouldn't be possible for us to appear before the Providence-on-Eastham Chatham and Harwich Board of Select in one night, but now, through the magic of this technology, we're able to do that. We wanted to make sure that we're getting in front of all of the select boards across Cape Cod this week to talk about updates related to COVID-19, and particularly reopening. Sarah and I, and the entire Cape and Islands Lettuce Delegation, have been working to, really, really working collaboratively with the business community, with our municipalities, with other stakeholders, to make sure that we are speaking in one voice as a region, yes, elevating up concerns, issues, challenges to the governor and his administration, and the reopening advisory board about our region, but also, and now particularly now, that we have a reopening plan, making sure that we disseminate that information in a uniform fashion, and make sure that we're speaking with really one voice as a region. Our aim in forming a Cape Cod Reopening Task Force and all of our efforts, our aim really is twofold, to save lives and to save livelihoods, and particularly given where we are, you know, on the eve of Memorial Day, in a non-pandemic environment, we would be ramping up for our season, and it looks like we're, we may still be able to do that in some way, but it's going to look very different. And so we have been working collaboratively to get out uniform information, and really, I think, as a region, make sure that there's a uniform public health message here. In the governor's press conference, for those of you that heard it today, the first thing he talked about was personal responsibility, that to meet all of the, as we move through these various phases, which are going to be informed by the public health surveillance and what's happening with COVID-19, we're going to need to, you know, that personal responsibility is really key. You know, all individuals needing to cover their nose and mouth, if you can't be apart from people washing of your hands, or washing surfaces frequently, keeping your distance, staying vigilant, if you have symptoms, staying home, not going to work. And those messages are really going to be important to the public here on Cape Cod, whether you're a year-round resident, or a seasonal resident, or ultimately a visitor. You know, our, the public is not distinguished between Chatham and Yarmouth, or Mashpee and Truro, and so we really feel that we need to be speaking with one voice, that we don't want to have a patchwork of sort of rules of the road, particularly from a public health precaution perspective. And so the reopening plan really provides a roadmap around how do we get there? There's, we're still digesting this, there's a lot of questions, much of, Phase 1 starts May 25th, so that's basically a week from today, and the governor said that phases will be at least for a three-week duration, and they could be longer. Again, this is being informed by public health. So our aim is to be speaking with one voice, to be supporting our business community, our employees, to be supporting our municipalities as much as we can, and so that's why Sarah and I are here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, and then glad to take some questions. I am due in Mashpee in a moment, so if you see me duck out, you're, of course, in the very best of hands with Sarah Peake, but good to be with all of you, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Julian, and Sarah, you moved on a little bit.
Yeah, right. It's like Hollywood Squares that keeps moving. It's like Hollywood Squares meets a chess game. It's unbelievable. And this is the third meeting platform that Julian and I have been on tonight. Each are nuanced, but...
Sarah, it's number four.
Oh, number four, there you go, right. So anyway, thank you for letting us have some time on your agenda this evening. It felt important just to touch base with our local officials, because, you know, you guys, as the elected board of selectmen and upstate senator, we're going to be the ones who are fielding a lot of questions as this moves forward, and Julian and I wanted to reach out to all of you, and I see a lot of town staff on the call as well, just to, you know, reinforce lines of communication that we are here. If there are answers that you can't find through the state's website, or a particular issue comes up, don't hesitate to reach out to us, and we will try to run it up the flagpole and get an answer from, you know, from somebody in Boston, and get that, get that back to you. I did have the opportunity to talk with the lieutenant governor this afternoon, and she was thrilled that we were reaching out to our boards of selectmen and said to be sure to convey her greetings to all of you, but also to convey that as the person who chaired the governor's working group, that it was public health, DPH, and the DPH commissioner that really drove this whole process, and they tapped into the brightest and best minds, the best epidemiologists, MGH had a representative on the, on the board and commission. So, you know, this reopening is just steeped with public health and science and data in that way, and as we move from phase to phase, it's going to be the science and data that's going to allow us to either move forward, stay static, or if things go really badly, to move backwards in time on this. So, you know, they received input from business sectors all across the Commonwealth, our very own Wendy Northcross from the Cape Cod Chamber, presented along with the gentleman who runs One Berkshire, to really highlight for them some of the unique needs of our seasonal communities, and how, you know, our time is limited when businesses can open up and operate and be viable down here. And I think that it is through the good work of Wendy Northcross in that presentation, if you look at page 15 of the deck that the administration put out today, there's a little asterisk under Phase 2, under Restaurants and Lodging, that talks about Restaurant and Hospitality Work Group convened on May 15th to develop procedures for opening. So Wendy is part of that group, the Berkshires are part of that group, and there are people from various industries who are. So I would encourage, if there are, you know, citizens, if there are citizen business owners who want to give input, that they reach out to Wendy Northcross and give her input on that, because they are specifically looking at reopening plans for our seasonal and tourist destination type of economy. And that too will be driven by public health, but also with an eye towards the urgency of time, and the limited time that we have down here. Just the other thing that I wanted to highlight, in terms of enforcement and inspections for the reopening, what the process will be for a, let's say, a restaurant to reopen, or for a retail to reopen for curbside pickup, which they will be allowed, retail will be What will be required is that they go to the appropriate business segment portal on the mass.gov/reopen, and they look at what the public safety and public health protocols are, and then they have to affirm that they have a plan in place to adhere to those protocols. They sign a certificate, or they sign a, you know, a pledge saying that, yes, I can and will conform to those protocols, and then they get a certificate that they can print out, and that goes in the window of the establishment. Now, where the local board of health, the local health agent, health inspectors come into play, is if there is a complaint, either by an employee or by a customer, that the guidelines are not being followed, then they go, they're, they are the boots on the ground that go and inspect to see, you know, if the complaint has merits, merit or not. Julian and I talked with Sean O'Brien from the county today, and he wanted to make sure that we let everybody know that the county is staffing up in their health department. He's already hired, let me just look at my notes here, he has already hired three new health inspectors. He's reaching out to some retirees who are professionals in this area to bring them back on, so, you know, we want to make sure that no single town's resources are stretched too thin, so the county is there to step in and help, and help with that. And I think with that, that's about the highlights, you know, as I said, we're all still digesting this, and there is beyond this 29-page deck, if you go to the state website, under the various categories, there's just a wealth of information up there. It's somewhat daunting to get, to get through all of it, but, for instance, in Chatham, they asked me a question about beach openings and beach protocols. There's a whole, there's a whole section up there on beach protocols, everything from food vendors, to bathroom use, to lifeguards, to social distancing, how you take money at a gate at the parking lot and all of that, and that level of detail, that granular level of detail, is repeated across every sector that you can imagine. So I would encourage all of you, as well as citizens, to go and really, you know, take some time and kind of go through all of this material.
Thank you, Sarah. Just an observation, and my observation is, whether it's federally, state, or locally, I emphasize that we can't, we can't take any risk at all, that health strives, health protection, safety is, and there's no other discussion. The other side is, forget that, we need to get businesses open. Either side, obviously, anything we do has some risk, and I'm hoping that this group will look very hard at reaching that right balance.
Right. Well, I think this group has looked very hard at reaching that right balance, and that's why the public health people were at the table and developing the metrics. I'm just looking through here to, to find them in the PowerPoint presentation, to develop the metrics that we'll, we'll look at, and this will be updated at least on a, this is not the best way to show this, at least on a daily, or at least on a weekly basis, if often, you know, where we are with the COVID-19 positive test rate. So, like, today, our positive tests of everybody who was tested was less than 10% tested positive. Just a week or two ago, we were at 14% or 18%, so that shows a decline in infections. The number of individuals who died from COVID-19, a very important one, that's still a work in progress, and there's a yellow little button, it's like a stoplight here. Number of patients with COVID-19 in hospitals, we look at that. Healthcare system readiness, by the way, it's a yellow dot here, but if you look at Cape Cod Healthcare's readiness, they have a declining population of COVID-19 patients, and they have ever-increasing capacity. So, you know, Mike Lauf and Cape Cod Healthcare, I give them a lot of credit, they've done a great job here. Testing capacity, we have a green dot, and contact tracing abilities is the other vector that they look at. So I know there are these two voices, you know, I hear them also, shut it down, let's just hibernate through the summer, and hope this all goes away by next year, and then we need to get open right away, because people are dying, because they don't have a livelihood, and those businesses will not be around next year. So I give the administration, I give the governor a lot of credit, this is a gigantic task, the vastness of it, and the consequences of getting it wrong are so significant, but I think, you know, it's sort of like Goldilocks, this porridge is too hot, this porridge is too cold, this one is just right. What they're working at is getting the just right through this plan, and it's not a plan that's static, it's a plan where we will continuously and continually look at those markers to see how we're going, and it's not a bold march to the finish line, and you can count three weeks, three weeks, three weeks, three weeks. If we see things going in a direction that, that is not in accord with the markers that are, and guidelines that are set up, we could go from Phase 2 back to Phase 1, or we could go from Phase 1 back to where, where we are now. We're staying in a particular phase for longer than three weeks. So, you know, public health, public safety, those are at the forefront, but at some point in time, the economy does have to start to reopen, and looking at these, this public health data, that is what is driving the decisions around reopening.
Other questions for Sarah or comments?
Larry, if I could just...
Back to you.
Representative, we exchanged emails last week. Could you update the board on where that legislation regarding town meetings stands at this point? It was built off of, I believe, Senate 2680 or 2860? I always get the numbers transposed.
Yeah, right, exactly, and it has a new bill number now, and it's, it is sitting still in House Ways and Means. We are sort of engaging in ever, at least the House of Representatives, is in ever more bold steps in what we take on in formal sessions. You know, right when this COVID-19 crisis hit, there was a lot of things that we did in our informal session, so it was just on a voice vote, any one member could object, but if no member objected, you know, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, and the ayes have it, and the bill was enacted and would end up on the governor's desk. When you get into things like, you know, these more complex municipal bills, and whether you're going to have write-in voting, whether you're going to have no-excuse absentee voting, how you're going to manage town meetings, whether people can call in, whether you'll have, put it all on a townwide ballot, those are things that's, not every member's going to agree to. So we have to be able to meet, file amendments, debate those amendments, and come up with a final bill. So this Wednesday will be my third Wednesday going up to Boston, I'm one of the division monitors, which means that I sit there with these earbuds in and my phone on, and I have 19 of my colleagues on a conference call through to me, and, you know, if they want to make an objection, a point of order with the chair, they say, hey, Sarah, I need to make a point of order, I have to stand up and say, you know, Representative so-and-so has a point of order, then he or she hangs up, they call a different line. Anyway, it's a whole big process. The first two things we did were bills that had little or no amendments proposed, there was little or no debate around them. This week, we're taking up the IT bill, there were, I think, 136 amendments filed, so we'll see when I get home, maybe it'll be Friday morning, who knows how we're going to do all of those. Anyway, the point is, we're taking baby steps to see how our technology can work for us to meet remotely, because, you know, it's not until Phase 4 that 160 people can be in a room together, and there's 160 of us in the Massachusetts House, so we're working on that, I'm confident that we're going to see more legislation starting to roll out, you know, as we get some of the kinks, iron out some of the kinks from our, what is still somewhat of a cumbersome process.
Thank you, Representative. Larry, I'll turn it back to you, I'm all set.
So Sarah, not to beat that dead horse, but I will, our drop date for our town meeting is June 8th. We have to decide whether to go forward or not to get our warrant printed. What's your, your best guess? I won't hold you to this, but...
The great Karnak, here we are. I, let me, let me make an inquiry, but I would be hard-pressed to think we're going to do it by the 8th of June, but I, you know, I don't, I don't know, but I'm going to make a note, I'll reach out to the...
...possibly have to do.
Yeah.
Joe, more on COVID-19, or Megan, or other, anyone else have questions?
Well, Larry, we have plenty more to cover on COVID-19.
Right.
Questions for the representative while we have her.
I guess not, Sarah, thank you very much, and I see Julian's last, but thank him as well. Excuse me, Michael's weighed in here.
Yeah, yep, thank you. Thank you, Sarah, for being on tonight and for all the information you provided, and thank you if and when you see him. I guess my question is, you know very well what Cape Cod, the dynamics of Cape Cod are, and I'm sure that there's plenty of other communities that are suffering as well, but Cape Cod and small business rely on shoulder seasons to not succeed, and in some cases now, they rely on it just to have a business. What plans are being made, you know, if I'm doing the math correctly, restaurants really aren't going to be open at any capacity other than take out until early July? What's being done on the, for businesses, second homeowners and towns, for that matter, that are going to have significant revenue losses and probably will not survive this? What's being worked on on that?
Yeah, so this is part of an ongoing conversation. We're talking about development bill, be able to offer businesses relief, because, believe me, you know, I have heard from business owners all across my district that even if they're, restaurants in particular, is who I've been hearing from, but even if they're able to get capacity by July, you know, there's going to be fewer people here, they're going to have to, you know, it's not rocket science, they're going to have to have fewer people in their restaurants, or do just outside seating, or whatever it might be, so revenue will be diminished, and I've heard over and over again, if we don't have some sort of relief ongoing, we won't be around next April to reopen. So certainly, I'm keenly aware of that, Senator Sears keenly aware of that, the chair of the Economic Development and Emerging Technologies Committee, who happens to hail from Gloucester, where, you know, they have somewhat of a seasonal tourist economy up there as well, she's keenly aware of that as well, and we know that we have to do something. You know, local aid, I don't know what to tell you guys, we haven't taken up a budget yet, in some part because of figuring out how we're going to meet, but the second piece of it is, the last I talked with Aaron Mikulitz, the Chair of House Ways and Means, he was hoping to have a budget out of House Ways and Means the 1st of July. He's thinking it may be more mid-July, even the end of July now, because every time we turn around, the revenue forecast keeps getting adjusted downward, downward, downward. So we've gone from a, you know, maybe $3 to $5 billion, where now we're talking about a $5 to $8 billion deficit in revenue versus the current fiscal year. So let's say it's $7 billion less in revenue than we have in FY '20, right, '20 is what we're in. We have a $42 billion budget, so, you know, you can do the math, that is a significant percentage of the state budget that we're realizing this revenue loss in. You know, the House in particular, I can say this, because Julian's not on the phone, the House in particular has always had local aid and Chapter 70 funding as its, as its priority, and has always done well by the towns. We will try our best this year, but I think as you guys are planning your budgeting going forward, I would not count on the same level of state aid, cherry-sheade aid, as you have seen this year, because the revenue's just not there. You know, what the wild card is, is what will the rate of relief be, or the degree of relief be from the federal government? You know, if we could get $5 billion from the feds in a block grant, that then we can disperse through our, our budget, wow, $5 billion would be great, that, that helps fill a $7 billion hole pretty successfully, and we've got, you know, over $2 billion in our rainy day fund, so, you know, we would be, we would be in good shape then. I don't know what we're going to get from the federal government, or what kind of strings are going to be attached to it, or how it has to be spent, so these are all the kinds of things that we're, we're trying to figure out. But believe me, I'm, I'm well aware that, you know, this year was going to be the quote-unquote "windfall" year, where all those house and cottage rentals was going to have a big local tax component to it, and you were going to see that, and it was going to be a great thing, we were going to help fund wastewater through it, and if those short-term rentals are kicked down the road to the middle of July, you know, that, that really eats into your revenue from sources other than, other than the state as well, and the same thing with meals tax.
Thank you, Sarah. I just, and I just have to stress as much as possible, these small businesses, second homeowners that rent their homes to pay their mortgages, we need as much relief, but I think we need to look at this on a day-to-day basis, not a week-to-week basis, and the, I'm hearing a lot from small businesses that they don't think they're going to make it even into July, because they count on getting out of a bad winter with the shoulder seasons at this point, and they're not getting the shoulder season, and there is no relief in sight, unfortunately. So these are drastic decisions that they're going to have to make soon. Just one...
And Mike, I'm hoping that with this Restaurant and Hospitality Working Group, that we can find a way to get some of those businesses open, maybe in a Phase 1.5. find a way to get some of those businesses open, maybe in a Phase 1.5 instead of a Phase 2. Again, if all the public health indicators are pointing in a direction that we're continuing to move towards decreased admissions, decreased positive, you know, a smaller percent of people who are tested being positive, hospital capacity, all of those kinds of things. So...
Thank you. And last question, the, you know, on our agenda tonight under Old Business, it says guidance impacting upon recreational activities, including beaches and other bodies of water. So I guess my question is, looking at the original proposed beach regulations, it talked about 50% capacity in parking lots and a 12-foot social distancing. And I apologize, I have not read what came out today. I haven't had time. But is it really a thought that we have to stay 12 feet on a beach and six feet apart in a building?
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Please, Joe.
If I could, we're going to get into several of those documents at the conclusion of Representative Peak's presentation. So we have much more information. That's why we have staff into specifics on that. So we can dive deeper in just a moment.
Okay. And I guess, Joe, or Sarah, I guess, part of my question was, it says guidance. Is it guidance or is it an order?
Everything the governor has issued so has been a guidance. The stay-at-home was a guidance. I heard him slip up, I think it was today in his press conference, and talk about his previous order. And then he's like, no, guidance, guidance, guidance. So he's a firm believer in people's personal responsibility and that you don't need things as, these are guidances. And, you know, I don't think anybody's going to be thrown in jail for not following them. But on the other hand, there are guidances that are based in science. And the consequence of not following them is that we're all going to be the current guidance that we're in, the stay-at-home guidance, because the virus, it doesn't discriminate. All, it needs people. It has to be passed from person to person to person. So we all have to behave in a way that inhibits from person to person to person. And if we don't, it's going to have dire consequences for us as individuals who might suffer a very severe illness. And it's going to have dire consequences for the entire ecosystem of our economy here that's so dependent upon interaction with people, whether guests, restaurant guests, people hiring carpenters, you know, whatever that might be.
Thank you, Sarah. We move to, we move to that discussion, Michael, with Joe and Megan, carry on the rest of the
Thank you, Sarah. Thanks for all you're doing.
Great, you're welcome. And, you know, you guys, you know how to find me. So stay in touch.
Thank you, Sarah.
Any other questions? Or am I jumping off too soon? Don, I see your microphone's green. But you can't hear him.
It didn't work, John. You gotta go back to your phone. I guess we'll let Don email his questions to you later.
All right. That sounds good. All right, everybody. Thank you for everything. Stay well, stay safe.
Thank you.
See you soon. Bye-bye.
Bye. Joe, we'll turn it over to you and Megan then for the
Larry, thank you for that. And to try to expedite the discussions, there's several documents I want to make reference to that I'm putting up on the screen now that I was able to share with the board earlier. I know it's a lot of material. Megan and I have gone through it. Staff have gone through it. So I just wanted to highlight a few of the documents and a few of the, I think really the questions that were coming up from board members. So the first document, hopefully you see up on your screen. And if you can just tell me whether or not you can see it, because now I can't see you.
We can see it.
Okay. So this first document is the 29-page deck that Representative Peak and Senator Seer were talking about. This is the official overview report of the reopening advisory board. And so I wanted to start on page 14, because it just really lays out, I think, graphically and some strong narrative of what's intended we started today. I'll show that on page 15, but you can see what Phase 1 is all about. High-risk work should be from home if possible. Consideration for workplace accommodations. We're still gatherings of less than 10. Safer at home. Travelers to Massachusetts are to self-quarantine. And lodging are restricted to essential workers only. And then you can draw over to the next phase of Phase 2 cautious, you know, as, again, as a general statement. If you then look at page 15, you can see how they've started to break out certain categories. So we know that a guidance directive was sent out from
Did you mean to put Phase 15 up on the screen?
I did, yep.
It hasn't changed. We haven't got that yet.
All right. Let me find out what's going on then. Thank you.
Joe, I'm seeing page 15.
All right. So page 15 is different, because in the left-hand corner, it says worship and business.
Okay. I got it. Sorry.
No, understandable, because the headers are the same. But under worship, they've identified that it began today with very strict guidelines on how to operate that. And you can see how worship will be impacted throughout the rest of the phases. For businesses, you can see that for today. Essential businesses, which remains in our instance, government, manufacturing and construction. And you can see what's anticipated next week. And then, of course, you can see Phase 2, where they're talking about updated guidance for retail restaurants, lodging, what have you. Then I'm going to jump to page 16. And I think where a lot of people are interested, if you look at the second part of that page, it says recreation and outdoor. So the good news is, the material's out there. The bad news is, we haven't had our call with Department of Public Health yet on these topics. That's going to happen tomorrow. But you can see that the state is looking at recreation and outdoor activities resuming as early as May 25 with guidelines. And so, again, that was the 29-page document that talks about the overview, if you will. The next document I'd want to share, if you bear with me, Mr. Chairman,
Hey, right.
is this document here. Well, I haven't done it yet. Excuse me.
Joe, I'm just going to mute everybody. A lot of people on the
Thanks, Scott. Hopefully you can, what you're seeing now is a guidance to municipalities on enforcing COVID-19 orders. And that was a discussion that we did have today, Department of Public Health, and really talking about where the municipalities come in, insofar as reinforcement and, excuse me, of enforcement on these. And, you know, we're still reacting to these documents that have come out. The next document I want to show is the one that Selectman McCaskill had mentioned. And so this one here is a version of what was released last week inadvertently, but you can see, and again, Scott, I'll rely upon you because I'm flying blind right now, but hopefully everyone can
Document.
Thank you. So one of the main things that changed in the opening paragraph last week, it talked about that this is a directive for Commonwealth beaches, guidance for municipalities and other beaches. And I guess the trick is, as you see the guidelines here, the governor's, he may be referring to all of these as guidelines. But the implication that was driven home to us today on the DPH call, and what I expect we'll hear again on the DPH call, is while these are guidelines, these are the expectations that we would meet in the hopes of stemming further cases of COVID-19. So Selectman McCaskill, to your question, we see in the second page of this document, talking about the distances. And the distance of 12 feet is related to beach blanket groups, as they've been referred to. So that would be groups of no more than 10 that have combined together on the beach, trying to create a distance of 12 feet between those blanket groups. Anyone traversing on the beach is still using, as you can see under user guidelines, first item there, beach visitors are required to maintain social distancing of at least six feet. Again, these have all just come out today, so we're really trying to scramble and react. Let me take that off for just a moment. I think what might be most helpful for the board is just a document that I've put together based on conversations with staff today. So again, this is a document that was just created. It was based on based on discussions with staff and relying upon the guidance document that we saw today. So I know that we've got Eric Beebe, Carol Capola, and Amy Bullock on the call. They joined Megan and I in reviewing that. So hopefully you can now see a document that says beach resumption planning. And this is specific to the town of Harwich. Scott, can you confirm that that's what's on the screen?
I do see it. Yeah.
So the first one was working on our understanding that government remains an essential business. But in the reopening 29-page deck, it says that essential businesses must come into compliance with the various directives, starting on May 25, which of course we know is Memorial Day. So there's two things what we talked about today, and that is steps the town needs to take to be in compliance with the Energy and Environmental Affairs Directive as an essential business. And then steps that we'll need to take to resume our traditional beach season, if you will, because all of this is on the understanding that our beaches were never closed. We now just need to take certain steps. So you'll see that we've talked about resident sticker sales. We're looking to have those begin in earnest. And we'd be hoping most people would take advantage of online or mail-in sticker purchases beginning in early June. And I say early June because that process is dependent upon the board's waste disposal hearing, fee hearing on June 1. We're working on non-resident sticker sales. If they're going to happen in person, we're trying to find a location that is suitable for social distancing, quick flow of getting people in and out of the area, and of course, all safety measures as directed by the various guidance documents. Again, that would be sometime in early June. The thing that is most encouraging is we're working on a concept of selling the daily passes at certain beaches, at the gates, if you will, with modifications. And I say certain beaches, because we're not convinced yet that, based on the requirements of the 12-foot spacing for groups on beaches, that Pleasant Road Beach and Earl Road Beach, I'm probably mixing up the names. I apologize. I wrote this quickly. But those two beaches are going to be probably negatively impacted by these directives. Again, we're still trying to figure that out. One thing we feel confident in stating is that we will not be renting equipment because of the strict guidelines from both the governing guidance documents, but also based on CDC requirements for sanitizing. It wouldn't make sense for us to meet those standards of sanitization after every use and still rent the equipment. We recognize we're going to have to expand efforts on restroom cleaning for obvious reasons. And then to do all of this, there is a concept phrases for a very specific purpose. These are folks that would be available to monitor both parking lots and beaches for compliance. And if we demonstrated in that manner, it is potentially a CARES Act reimbursable expense, because we are expending funds to ensure safe distancing and everything tied back to the CDC and other federal and state agencies. And again, as you can see in the bottom of that page, all of this is based on the guidance that came out today in that memorandum from the Energy and Environmental Affairs Secretary. And then one more, I believe, Mr. Chairman. Just to put it out there on restaurants. So we did receive guidance today from the ABCC, and it's more, I think, a tip of the plan to what may be coming down the road. But as you know, restaurants that are open are able to allow for alcoholic beverages to go, so to speak. So it's selling, it's restaurants selling alcoholic beverages that are not allowed to be consumed on the premises. So the restaurant gives you your cocktail, your beer, your wine, but you cannot consume it at the restaurant, so you have to take it out to go. So you can see the highlight here is the ABCC is directing all licensees that are impacted by this to not expect the change in that until at least June 8. So I found that to be significant, as you heard, because there's talking about the Restaurant Hospitality Group that is going to be working, that started work on the 15th. There we go. Started work on May 15. So we know that they're not in a position yet today or probably this week to get into their guidance documents. As I mentioned before, staff worked last week. If we're with community development, we're going to be reaching out to restaurants to try and devise a plan where they may be able to utilize outdoor spaces near their facilities, so that they have a fighting chance to get customers who may not be inclined to go into their establishment, but may be willing to sit outside and eat. So again, a number of documents that I've just run through very quickly, a number of documents that I've shared with the board, and just so much more to cover. I know on the agenda, I've offered information that talks about restaurants. We're obviously going to have more discussions about beaches. I know Roman Greer is on the call, so he's still been able to operate with the restrictive guidance from the state. And it might be in a position to expand operational hours while still meeting all of the required guidelines. I have the feeling that I may have contradicted things that were said before. And I know I've struggled with the phrase guidelines. But everything that I've read in the documents that have come out today is, it strikes me as very direct from the administration that for certain operations to resume, you can do so once you pledge to do the way that they've outlined the guidelines. So I think we are compelled to build a beach resumption plan that ties back to as many of the guidelines as we think we can reasonably meet. The same thing for golf operations, and then any other operations going forward. At this point, I'm going to take a breath, take a drink of water, and see if Megan can clean up what I've said wrong or add anything that I may have missed.
Larry, before we move on, can I ask just two questions?
Larry, are you there? All right, go ahead. I abuse myself.
Okay. I didn't get the one, the last one to Sarah, and that really had to do with state roads being used for outdoor dining. That's beyond our jurisdiction. So eventually, I would like that asked of her. But blanket distance But blanket distances, you're talking about the 12?
Could I respond to that very quickly?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, when we had discussions with staff last week, we were of the same mindset. And so what we're hoping for is direction from the ABCC. We were told that the ABCC is partnering with Mass Restaurants Association. So we're hoping if there's that with the state, that we could get guidance on businesses that are on state roads. So we're looking for that as well. So that's front and center of some of our option building and decision-making.
Secondarily, the blanket distance, the blocks of 12? I'm just curious, especially in the social distancing part about that. How do you, how do you govern that? Let's say you've got a family of four or five that were locked down together. So they came to the, I mean, do they have to be socially distancing if they were already together in their houses for weeks before that?
So I think the, the intent of the guidance is that you can assemble in groups of 10. Again, this is phase one. We saw phase two that could, David could be relaxing that number. So it may not even be in effect by the time we get to the full beach resumption season on June 27th. But the directive, as I understand it, starting May 25th is a group of 10. And we're not asking who populates your group of 10. But you can't be in larger groups than 10 because that's the current order of the governor under the emergency.
I was just reading the guidance that even within that, they were still advising you to do social distancing or wear masks. It actually looked like.
Yeah, one of the, it did say in the, in the, in the guidance that anyone on a beach should be wearing a mask. That's what it says in the guidance.
Okay, moving along because of something you, I'm sympathetic to what Michael was saying too. I talked to a restaurateur yesterday. I'm trying to get this clarified. I know they were allowing beer and wine to go on a pouring license. You get a dinner and then get a bottle of wine with it, take it along with you home. My question was, and I didn't have the answer yesterday when I was talking to him. He was under the impression he wasn't allowed to do cocktails, just beer and wine. Does anybody have an answer to that? Because that really matters to most restaurants. That's where their profit margin is.
According to the ABCC update, it indicates that the, there was a guidance document from the ABCC on April 3rd on how on-premise licensees may sell wine and malt beverage. So that is beer and wine only.
Not cocktails?
No, that was probably my wishful thinking.
Yeah, the RMB might have something to say about this too at some point, but I'll move on.
Thank you, Don. Megan, I guess the floor is yours.
All right, so to, to kind of go over what Joe has said. I think I'm having trouble with my audio.
We've temporarily lost you, Megan. Joe, while we're waiting for Megan to reconnect, are there specifically regarding the beaches, is there a plan to, how are you going to notify people? Do you plan signs going to the beach of some of the requirements? Or they can buy daily passes or is there some, what's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, we, we talked about that and I, I will seek Eric's input if he can unmute his phone. But we talked about inserts with ticket sales, obviously leveraging social media, the website, signage and everything else. We talked about partnering with any of the places that do rentals, if they're allowed, just trying to get the word out in advance as to what the limitations may be or areas that may not be allowed per day pass.
No, I'm here.
Oh, you're here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm here.
I saw a note that you left, but thanks, Eric. I'll let you weigh in as well then.
Sure, yeah. I kind of echo what Joe says about informing the public is going to be very important as far as sticker sales, daily pass sales, all keeping COVID regulations. We are looking at the signage for all beaches, staffed and unstaffed. We're also going to try to, as Joe said, if we could put inserts in any mail-out stickers, we're going to have our gate attendants inform all the public as they come into the beach of regulations that they're going to have to follow, as well as any changes that would happen at the beaches. And we're planning on making good use of our Twitter and Facebook pages to really put that out there, as well as teaming up with Jamie from Channel 18 to get about as much word out there as we possibly can.
Thank you, Eric. Megan, you want to try again? I'm seeing Megan twice now, so double.
Oh, I look, I look very strange in that one. Okay, I'm having some technical difficulties.
Oh, I look, I look very strange in that.
You can talk to Don about technical difficulty, that's, he'll work it out for you.
Okay, so what I was saying, what I was saying is the guidance versus what we are mandated to do or should do is that the reopening plan says beaches and have patrons or people on them with guidelines. And the guidelines that they have provided us are fairly loose. It's just enacting that social distancing. So we are able to open the beaches. We always have, it doesn't have a 50% parking or only so many people per beach. It's as long as groups maintain 12 feet from each other, which really makes it so you have a, a little bit of an aisle to so you're able to stay six feet from either side of you. We're not going to go out there with a tape measure, but we will have people out there, and I think I'm frozen again. All right, you guys are frozen and not me. We'll go with that. So I think that the, the guidelines that we have are workable, easy to, to work around. We, we talked about restricting day passes for a few different reasons. One is, right now travelers from out of state are supposed to self-quarantine for 14 days. So should we be allowing a day pass when we're not sure if they're self-quarantined for that full 14 days? And then we see that we, we could do in-person transactions. The, the very first document that we saw had no in-person transactions for day passes. The, the new guidance allows for that. So I think we can work within the guideline. But the public health need is to maintain social distancing. So we need to regulate that in some way. And having monitors on the beach is really the only way to do that without having to call the police. We don't have enough health agents to go to every beach and do that. So we are going to have to spend money to pay people to monitor the social distancing. That, in my mind, is the greatest public health need is the beaches are going to be crowded. We know that. We need to do our best to, to maintain social distancing.
I guess, Megan, that answers our discussion. Do we need seasonal help or not?
And I actually recommended that we start that prior to the official beach opening of June 27th because this weekend, next weekend, they're, they're still going to have more people on the beaches than we have had in the last few weeks. And if we don't want to use public safety staff, we're going to need to provide some through the rec department.
Thank you, Megan. Michael, you're lit green. You wish you a comment, question?
Yeah, I guess the first, and Megan, you lost me a little bit, but the, the day passes. Was that affirmative, we're going to sell day passes or we're not, or we haven't decided yet?
We have decided to go forward with day passes. There's, that's, we, we're able to do it by not having too much person-to-person interaction.
Okay, thank you. And I guess this would be to Joe. I, I am receipt of a letter from Executive Office for Administrative, Administration and Finance dated May 14th. And, and also the, the guidance document for the same. And it shows that for the CARES Act, that the, the amount that, that is available for the town of Harwich is a little over $1 million. Obviously, Joe, well, obviously, but I think Carol's probably working on this. Is this related to the much lower number we filed for? With the anticipation that we're going to add to it, or is this in addition to that?
So there's, there's really two things going on there. The, we got confirmation today that the tornado money should be received in two business days to the town. Carol was able to get that information from, from the administration today. The, the dollar amount of 1 million, I think it's 1,600,000, is related to Harwich's potential reimbursable amounts under the CARES Act. And there was a webinar on Thursday, there was information released on Friday. And Carol and I have gone through the paperwork and we'll have Larry, a chair, be able to initiate a password that gives us access to that. So it's a fund that the town may be able to give reimbursement of certain expenses. So two different things coming at the same time, which is a positive. So we have the tornado funds coming in, in two business days. And we have access to potential reimbursement through the materials that were released on Friday.
And that's the 1,69,000?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any other, Megan, did you, excuse me, Steve?
Larry? Yeah, I have a question for Megan. And I, I don't really know whether there's an answer for this, but I would think that we're going to have some problems with the private beaches. People spreading from, from Bank Street into the privately owned beaches and from C Street into the privately owned beaches. Do you anticipate a problem there? And, you know, because a lot of those folks, they're going to, I'm sure they'll be calling our, you know, our police force and so forth, but, you know, because they'll be trying to spread out.
I think we, we will have an issue with our, our beaches sprawling on to either side and to the, and to the private sides. That's one good reason to have more beach monitors than we usually do. We also don't want to have to rely on the police, but they are partners in this and they understand the need to, to help when and if we call them. But I think more education, more signage and more, more presence of town staff enforcing this will assist with that.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments for Megan or Joe? Is this, end this discussion?
It certainly allowed, we covered everything we wanted to cover. And it's really just based on questions that the board may have. Again, it's tomorrow, the rest of the week, more guidance will come out on different areas. There was something that was released today on waterways that we sent over to John Rendon. It may not have an impact. But the, they're going to be explained in hopefully greater detail tomorrow by DPH. So we'll have more information, keeps coming out.
Michael, you're, you're lit up, you.
Yeah, Larry. Yeah, if we, if we can, I, I think it is important that we go back up to the beginning part of this agenda and get the rest of the meeting going, but can we at least bring this back? A couple more related questions. But I, I would be happy to do that towards the end of the meeting so we can get on with the rest of the agenda, since we have people waiting to.
I'm fine with that. We'll, we'll continue this with your two questions later on, Michael. Thanks for, Joe, we'll move on then to new business. First item on new business is discussion and vote to appoint Deputy Fire Chief David LeBlanc as Fire Chief effective upon retirement of current Fire Chief Norman Clark. And Dave, I know you're, pardon, but before you do that, I want to give Dave a chance to inform us his, his background experience in Harwich. So because there may be some folks in town that, that aren't aware of, of all the things you've done.
Thank you a lot, so thank you for the opportunity having me on tonight. I started in Harwich in 1993. I grew up in Dennis and was called firefighter there and worked as a summer dispatcher. And Chief Peterson was good friends with Paul Tucker, so we used to see him all the time. And when Harwich had a dispatch opening in 93, I was able to get hired then. And spent the first eight years of my career dispatching and was able to become a firefighter in 2000, which was my ultimate goal. And then just was blessed really enough to work my way up through the ranks, right place at the right time. The first multiple promotion, second multiple promotion to lieutenant. I was number two on the list, so I was able to move up through the ranks and had a lot of good mentorship along the way, a lot of good bosses, a lot of good chiefs. And, you know, the one thing I'm really proud of is, as the letter says in the packet, is this department has always been about bringing the next person along. And I, I'm the recipient of that. I benefited from that. Chief Clark certainly took me under his wing when I was his captain, when he was my captain. And all the way up through when he was deputy, I got promoted to lieutenant. And then ultimately making me his deputy when Chief Farakoff went to Eastham. And I've been very fortunate from the beginning. Chief Peterson allowed me to be involved in a lot of projects. The Cape switched over to the 800 megahertz radio system. I was integral in, in setting up the programming of that with the dispatchers from the county and Ross Town and Joey Gibbs. And through that, started writing grants, took over after Chief Flynn became chief, I took over writing grants and was able to successfully get three or four grants for the town for several hundred thousand dollars. And just, you know, just had, had been very blessed to be able to participate in a lot of things. It gave me a lot of experience that ultimately I think was prepared, prepared me for the position I'm in now.
Thank you, Dave. Does anyone else have a, anyone have a question for Dave? You know, my comment is, is that I see Chief Clark is on the, is visible. But I think we're all proud to be associated with a department that sets a standard for training and mentoring and providing a career, a career path to promotion. And it's shown by all the accolades that the department gives and has gotten over the years. And with that, I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I got to agree on either Steve or Michael. Michael, you wish to make some motion?
No, Don, Don was ahead of me.
Don?
I'd like to make the motion that we appoint David LeBlanc and Kurt, Deputy Fire Chiefs, to the post of Fire Chief effective at the retirement of the current Chief Norman Clark. effective at the retirement of the current Chief Norman Clark contingent upon successful negotiations for a contract.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, a comment. Chief Clark, do you wish to make a comment?
I do, Mr. Chairman. After a long career, I like the deputy have learned from the best of the best. I'd like to, I'd like to think that tonight we can check that, that last box for me of goals and objectives that you in particular, Mr. Chairman, have held me to, goals and objectives. And it's a good night. I assure you with this appointment that you have left the Harwich Fire Department and the town of Harwich in very, very good hands. I'm very proud of David. He's a great, great, great man, a great friend and a true professional.
Thank you, Chief. Other comments? Yes, Tom?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment because initially there were rumblings out in the community that there was some possibility that this was nepotism. I'm just going to take that head on. This, this department has a culture of accountability that's remarkable. I mean, people come into this place and learn the right way, do it the right way. We have, whenever we've had any Cisco problems, one of the most cooperative departments about tearing things apart and putting them back together in a way that can save the town money. The fire department is right up there as number one with being able to do things the right way and as cheaply as possible, but as what, with as much expertise as possible. I've said this for 20 years. If you don't wind up rewarding people within the town who are actually trying to better themselves and are willing to test themselves, then you wind up with a morale situation that is catastrophic to the town. So I just want everybody to, this is a reflection of the merit that Dave has shown, not just next man up because he happens to be the next man up.
Thank you for that, Don. Michael, I see you wish to speak?
No, I mirror some of Don's comments. Wanted to congratulate David. I do think he's worked for it. It's certainly something he's, I think he's had his eyes on. The endorsement from Chief Clark certainly goes a long way. We did get, the board got a letter. I don't know, maybe six months ago, and it was from a resident saying that the automatic reappointments are a, something that, a practice that the town shouldn't be involved in. And, and I don't believe the board ever took that up. I, I do think that Norm has done a great job and the past chief did a great job mentoring and bringing these employees up as done. And I do think David's earned the spot. So congratulations, David. Obviously depending on a successful contract, but I do think you've earned it and have always respected you in your position. And I think you do a lot for the town outside of the fire department, which is also recognized.
Thank you, Michael. Steve, you have a comment?
Yeah, I, one, I want to, I want to thank David for the letter that he sent to us, which was great. Sort of highlighting the reason he's so committed and wants so very much to position. I too want to, want to thank Norm, who's given such a strong recommendation for David. I will tell you that my experience with both Norm and David since my first year as selectman has just been superb. Very open, very willing to discuss that, that surround the fire department, the budget, as Michael said, or Don said. And, you know, I'm just, I'm, I'm very proud to have a chance to, to, to support David in this. Careful what you wish for though, David. We're in a very difficult time, you know, for the town. And I'm sure it will be difficult for the fire department as well. But that makes even more reason for us to be choosing someone who has such deep knowledge of our department and all our employees because, because it will be a difficult time and we will need a good, solid leader. And I'm sure you'll be that person.
Thank you, Steve. Ed? Ed, you wish to weigh in? We've, let me, let me take a roll call vote and Dave, so we can move this on. We have a motion in a second to promote you to chief contention on the successful contract negotiation. I'll take your roll call. Don?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Ed? We apparently lost Ed temporarily. I'm an I, so you have certainly four votes and I feel certain that Ed will, if he's, we've missed him occasionally. But congratulations, Dave, for, it's worked for you. Your, your job will be, part of your job will be keep Norm out of trouble during his retirement.
I seriously, I really, I would like to thank you for both the opportunity and the support. It hasn't always been easy, but, but I've always felt that we're a good working relationship and I don't see that changing at all. It's, we're, we're one, one ship in the big ocean here in many departments and we'll make it work as we always do.
Thank you and good luck. And we look forward to working with you as we have with Norm and will be before him.
Larry?
Michael?
Yeah, just real quickly on the, can we get an idea or sense of when? I mean, we're, we're the Fire Chiefs of Direct Hire for the Board of Selectmen. Who's going to work on the proposed contract and when should we expect to see it?
I'll throw that to you, Joe. I assume you'll work at least the initial contract and bring it back to us. And I was, I assume in two weeks, three weeks like that.
It is appropriate as Chief Personnel Administrator unless the board wants to go in any other direction.
And timeframe to answer the second part of that?
Well, we're going to see each other tomorrow in this cramped room known as EOC, so I plan to do it.
Just real quick, just the irony is that it's the 18th and exactly two months from this date, two months from this date, Chief LeBlanc will take over. Two months from this date, exactly.
Thank you, Norm. Don?
Yeah, I, I'm just listening to Joe and while I agree with Joe because you can't have five negotiators, that at some point in time, we probably want to have an executive session over the contract negotiation only because the Board of Selectmen happened to be the play, the chiefs, both chiefs are direct reports to the board. So we need to be able to understand what it is that we're doing.
Agreed. We'll, we'll bring that back.
The way I heard it, Mr. Chairman, was preliminary negotiations.
Correct.
That's how I took it.
That's exactly what I said.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all. We'll move then to the next item on the agenda. Discussion and possible vote vote to approve and authorize the chair to sign Commonwealth of Massachusetts dredging program grant award to the town of Harwich for $36,000.
Larry?
Michael?
I move that we vote to approve and authorize the chair to sign the Commonwealth of Massachusetts dredging program grant award to the town of Harwich for $36,000.
Okay.
They moved and seconded. So any discussion? I, I think I know John, we have others here, but I think this is purely self explanatory. And so there's no discussion. I'll take a roll call vote. Don, I'll start with you.
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Ed? I don't know if he's gone or he's having some difficulty, but I'm an I, so four votes, four. And so last pass. Thank you all. And John, I think you're still there. Thanks for showing up. I think we'll move on.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is presentation of Coldbrook Nation, Alteration Project Update.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to turn this directly over to our town engineer, Griffin Rider, who's been the lead point person. And I know he has several individuals on this on the call as well. So at this point, I'll turn it over to our town engineer.
I certainly see Brian House. It's been some time, Brian, but welcome.
Hey, Larry. Hi, everyone. Griffin Rider here. Joe, if you could share your screen and potentially share the presentation? And then we will, we will next slide you.
And Ed, why are you sitting there? I forgot to mention you. Welcome as well.
Thank you, Larry.
So Griffin, I hope you mean the presentation that's included in the packet, correct?
Correct. I believe it starts on page 44 through page 56.
Larry, while, while the presentation's going on, can somebody get a question to make sure that he's around?
Maybe a good point. Scott, can you call him maybe?
I'll take care of that, yes.
I think the screen is showing now and everyone can see this. So basically we're, we're here tonight and I don't want to take too much of your time. I know we've had a long meeting, but we're here tonight to just give you an update on the Coldbrook natural nitrogen attenuation project, which is also known as the Coldbrook Eco Restoration Project. And, and it's got a couple of different names because it's, it's, it's been born into different things. And it's more than just a natural nitrogen attenuation project, which, which helps with the town of Harwich, CWM. But it's really an eco restoration project with, with a number of partners that the town's been working with. And just a little bit of background, the project was voted on and funded via Article 12, the Coldbrook Project, which was part of the 2017 annual town meeting, which, you know, this project was part of the implementation of phase two of the town of Harwich's comprehensive wastewater master plan. Joe, if you want to go to the next line? So just to give you a brief look at the, the project team. It is a large project team. See if that pops up. And, you know, the good thing about being a large project team is, is there's a lot of expertise involved with this team. So, you know, we obviously have the town of Harwich. I'm involved as a town engineer. Dan Pelletier, who is the Water and Wastewater Superintendent, is also involved with the project. It's also involved with the Harwich Conservation Trust, which is, includes Michael Locke. CDM Smith includes Dave Young, TMDL Solutions is Ed Eichner. Most of these folks are with us tonight. And then the UMass Dartmouth School of Marine Science and Technology, also known as SMAST. We have Ryan Howes with us from the Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game, Division of Ecological Restoration. We have Eric Ford, some other sub consultants in the US Fish and Wildlife Service. And so that's, that's, that's the team in a snapshot. And, you know, the town's focus, as I mentioned, which was, Joe, if I switch to the next slide here, which was part of the 2017 annual town meeting vote, was to implement this project as, as a means for natural nitrogen attenuation without having to put pipes in the ground. You know, we've all, we've had many conversations about the sewer project in East Harwich, which involves piping to a treatment plant. However, this project is, it's more of a natural project where we're using, you know, the ecology that we have in this area, known as Coldbrook, to attenuate water. And by attenuating the water and enhancing the water quality, we can increase the nitrogen removal before it gets out to Saco Tucket Harbor. One of the reasons why we are required to implement our comprehensive wastewater master plan is because of the issues that we have with nitrogen in Saco Tucket, Witch Bear, Pleasant Bay and a number of other places in Harwich and throughout the Cape. So it's, it's a, it's an interesting project, which allows us to, you know, look at alternative type technologies to receive and get nitrogen treatment without putting pipes in the ground and without major, you know, infrastructure improvements. So, you know, this, this project alone will, the way that we're looking at it now, and I think the initial studies from, from the MEP report, and Brian can speak to this because he's been involved with it probably, he probably has one of the longest tenures on the project. But I think in the initial MEP report, it was indicated that, you know, this project might be able to remove somewhere on the, on the order of 35% of nitrogen. However, with the way that we're looking at it now and with the design team, you know, digging in as we move into, into, you know, deeper design and move towards construction, we're looking at potentially 50% reduction. So it's, it's a really, it's, it's an interesting project that serves a lot of purposes. And, and we think will really, it dovetails nicely with the comprehensive wastewater master plan, but it also dovetails nicely with some other elements with Harwich Conservation Trust, with DER, with, you know, US Fish and Wildlife and a number of those other agencies. So I'd like to kick it over to Brian Howes. Brian is with the UMass Dartmouth School of Marine Science and Technology, SMAST. Like I said, he's one of the longest tenured individuals with the project. And he, he will go through sort of a brief update of where the project has been over the last year and where we're looking to move to in the near future. So with that, I'll kick it over to Brian. And with that, Joe, if you could go to the next slide. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Griffin. So by longest, you mean oldest or, or what? All right. Thank you very much for okay. Thank you very much for having us on tonight. I'm just going to try to give you a little bit of a brief update. But I would like to start by underscoring what Griffin said. The project from the town's point of view, the reason town voted the money was really to use an innovative approach to removing nitrogen from Saco Tucket Harbor, which is, is demanded under the Clean Water Act and is, is codified in a TMDL from Mass DEP in USA for that harbor to the town as the steward. That was reported based on the, the Massachusetts Estuaries Project for the Saco Tucket Harbor. And Harwich engaged, partnered with, with the university to, to do those Estuaries projects for all of its Estuaries. And now Mass DEP in 2016 turned the 2010 report into this TMDL, which sets the framework for the restoration. But the TMDL does not do it. So the town has taken on really what is a very innovative way to do things. Rather than putting in pumps and pipes and sewers and dinging up the roads, the concept was to take this, this fallow cranberry bog, to be a wetland that was turned into a cranberry bog that is no longer producing canned cranberries and is, is going back to grassland and shrub swamp and things like that. To take that and to restore it into natural ecological systems, subsystems, a diversity of systems with the goal of getting a really improving resources, but also getting community engagement and getting people out there to view it. So it'll be a resource and attraction for the town. At the same time you're doing that though, we've, we've engaged in a, a way to increase its natural which has been damaged by the fact that it was turned from a wetland to a cranberry bog. And to get those, that system functioning again as it should function, which involves a significant amount of nitrogen attenuation that comes through it. And it's not just septic system nitrogen. It's road septic nitrogen, septic nitrogen, lawn fertilizers, atmospheric deposition, any form of nitrogen which comes through it. And as Griffin said, and I really want to underscore, we're shooting for at least a removal of the total nitrogen flowing through of around 50%. Probably should be more than that because we've got a little more in recently in the last year on how to do it, how to do that. Okay, so it's, as you can see, the bog system comes down from grassy pond. The red is the Coldbrook portion of it. And you can see Saco Tucket Harbor down in the lower right hand corner. And that is the, the regular target that we're trying to fix, but we want to do it by this natural restoration. Okay, next slide. You can, can. Thanks. So this was the plan that we had, had come up. It was a conceptual design that we had in 2018. We then looked for money from the federal government, the town appropriated money to, to, to see what kind of, of design would be best. This was a conceptual design and what you see is those, those medium blue patches in, in the, in the Bank Street Bog System are created ponds that would go in. They're not very deep, less than six feet, frequently shallower than that. Connected by the, the existing freshwater stream. It goes all the way over to the right. And then when it drops south, it would go through a transitional kind of freshwater marsh that would eventually convert to salt marshes. However, when we started looking at this, and it's really nice, you can draw things on a map. But then it comes down to, well, how deep are the ponds? How big are the ponds? What vegetation are you going to put in? How are you going to do the salt marsh? Is it really going to be a salt marsh? When is it going to, how is that going to move? We started doing that. We went to the next slide. Next slide, plan, which is sort of pretty much this, no, no, go back. Sorry, that was my fault. So it's pretty much the same in that you still see that. Sorry, that was my fault. So it's pretty much the same in that you still see that string of blue ponds coming down from grassy pond down to that purply area to the south, which now will become a relatively rapidly in our time a full salt marsh. And within that, there's some not ponds, which are some open areas, some flats, the whole water, and some ditches and creeks, some following the natural creek that was there, some will be created. But the concept is you still have this string of ponds, then a salt marsh, and around those ponds, an innovation was to put in emergent and flooded wetland areas too, which had not been in the previous plan. So the major changes here were to improve the salt marsh and to get in these these wet areas around the ponds, not just have it be wetland and then pond, but a gradation. Next slide. Okay. What I should say, and I'll say it again at the end, is that we look for systems that are natural to the town of Harwich and to Cape Cod that would fit in with the natural landscape, but also that would improve the nitrogen attenuation. Yes, we wanted to restore the system. Yes, we wanted nice environments and resources. But you can do that with nitrogen removal in mind. Or not. We just said, well, let's restore it and get the nitrogen removal, not or, it's and. So the first one, we all know salt marshes on the Cape. First one, that big lower is about ten acres of salt marsh that will, that right now is not. It's more dry marsh and bog. And that will be improved by, as the tide rises, with some manipulations to the surface just a little bit. And by letting this naturally transitioning, transition, we hope to A, have a very nice natural gradation into salt marsh over time that is sustainable and that is stable, but it will slowly transition in, just like every other natural marsh on Cape Cod. The nice thing about salt marshes, they are fantastic nitrogen scrubbers. Most salt marshes don't let much nitrogen get out of them. They remove a significant amount. So by putting this into a system that didn't have it, we hope to get some additional nitrogen removal. Next slide. And then we have those ponds that string down, the three or four ponds that string down. And by ponds, we mean open areas, open water areas. They're not very big. They're not very deep. They're going to run three to six feet in depth. And, but they're going to be wet and they're going to be resources for fish, for overwintering wildlife, for birds, and equally important, ponds are fantastic at removing nitrogen that passes through them. On Cape Cod, typically about fifty percent of the nitrogen that goes through a pond is removed by the pond ecosystem, permanently removed. Next slide. And around the ponds, one of the newer things that popped up was we're going to have deep emergent marsh, which just means that it's, it'll be the pond in the middle, but then there'll be this wetter area around the outside, which only has about one to three feet of water at most in it, but should always have some water in it, which will allow the nitrogen to flow through as the stream goes through. These will flow through ponds and nutrients carried down by the stream. It will be taken up by these emergent marsh and by the pond. And most of the nitrogen is entering this system through groundwater and we already determined where and how much and how much nitrogen carries. Next slide. And then we're going from obviously open water to permanently kind of wet area to then a shallower wet area that could periodically dry and periodically be wet. And these are great areas as well for nitrogen removal, but really they're also very good for wildlife. Add diversity to the system, to add a more diverse resource for all of the animals and greater plant diversity, all of those nice things. And also make a better experience for the people that are walking through on trails. Next. So then we get back to this again. And what I like to say, this last slide really, I really like to say about this is just that we start with a system that has dug channels through areas that are cranberry bogs. They're only wet when they got flooded. They're dry now, pretty much. And the nitrogen pretty well just comes in in groundwater and passes through this system down to Saco Tucket Harbor. When we're done, what we'll have is we'll build into this system, salt marsh, which removes nitrogen significantly, freshwater ponds that remove nitrogen significantly, emergent marsh, shallow and deep, that is great for scrubbing nutrients out. And then some additional enhancement in the channels. But all of those diverse systems are great for natural resources and diversities and diversity and things that people like to see in nature. But they also, at the same time, will save the taxpayers of Harwich funds that they don't have to spend on digging up their roads to put in sewers and pumps and pipes. So it should be a win-win situation for everybody. We appreciate your time. We appreciate town meeting passing funding to date. We're on track. Next slide. We're really on track because we intend, DER has been running the show on the design, and we expect a fifty percent design by June thirtieth, which is slightly after we open up some beaches, I think. And we will complete the final design and permitting by summer of 2021. The concept that by fall of 2021, after all the tourists have left, that we start, we put out the bid and then we have construction complete before the next summer starts. The town of Harwich's effort will be to update the baseline monitoring, which has helped to design this system, was to figure out how the system worked. Town worked on that before with us. And then we will continue post-construction monitoring, sort of like for compliance and determine the success of the report. If you're going to say this removes nitrogen, you're going to go to DEP and say you have a TMDL, you really need to know how much extra nitrogen it removes. So you get credit for it in your TMDL. Next slide. And that's it. And thank you very much. And I'll take any questions or comments or I'll take them in writing at home too and write you back by email.
Thank you, Brian. Nice presentation. You've raised my comfort level. I had been concerned because if you go back to your, some of your initial comments said the system now removes about thirty-five percent and fifty percent that nitrogen reduction. In those early plans, they relied on a couple of deeper ponds and so-called cells two and three, with I think the feeling that the marshes as designed in that phase would not be sufficient removing nitrogen.
Right.
And I'd been skeptical because some of the phases, when I became less involved, seemed to be doing nothing with the marshes, but removing the deep ponds and making it more shallow. But you're saying now that you have enough, the salt marshes and the Herringgold system is enough to slow the water down to remove nitrogen. And there's good evidence for that. You're comfortable that that will do the same thing.
Yeah, every mill pond on Cape Cod, of which there's dozens, we have studied and every one of them removes nitrogen significantly. Some remove two-thirds of the nitrogen that goes through them. There's a mill pond in Falmouth that does that. As long as they're deep enough, which is, you know, three to six feet's fine. And this isn't, you can't just look at the pond out here because that emergent marsh is sort of an extension of the pond. And that you may get even more bang for the buck by that combination than by just bigger ponds. So kind of real meeting of minds on this. And salt marshes, there's the first salt marsh, a really tiny marsh, smaller than than we're talking about here in Falmouth, was written into a Massachusetts permit for discharge permit for the town of Falmouth because it removed a forty percent of the total nitrogen that flowed through it. And they actually put it in the wastewater permit as an allowance so they could discharge more in their discharge site. So it's already in regulation that it works. DEP is comfortable with it as long as you can demonstrate the number. That's all they're going to ask at the end. They'll say, yeah, it's great. They'll look at the beautiful sites in Harwich. And then they'll say, tell us how much is removed. And then that's why we have a monitoring plan at the backend.
And Larry, if I may, this is Griffin. You know, that's where that monitoring plan is really going to come into play because the more that we can monitor to prove how much we're removing, the better credit we're going to be able to take for it. So one of the things that'll be coming before the board in the near future is, you know, probably a contract for the monitoring, you know, which is within the appropriation. But that's kind of the next step that we're looking at from the town perspective.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Other questions or comments?
When you had, when that fifty percent number, you know, we're responsible for that when we did the MEP. We knew so much less about that site then than we do now. And the diversity of habitats, once we grasped onto that for this site, I think that fifty percent will blow by that pretty easily.
Well, I think, I guess an animal, animal house joke is knowledge is good. It's gone, with your presentation, I think, gone in good direction because we started with, I hope would be a compromise of nitrogen removal and ecological restoration. Till one point, seeing all the discussion was ecological restoration, was forgetting about any nitrogen removal. And that's been my concern, was a compromise plan that we all benefited from. And I'm hoping, and this seems like it's going to do that. So my
I don't think it's a compromise plan. I think what we had was a meeting of the minds and that we got
Good. Other questions or comments for anyone? I see here.
No, I'm good with the presentation. Thank you.
Okay, and I guess then the actions in your court and Griffin's and your and Joe's court for the monitoring to follow up with.
Gary.
Michael.
I just wanted to add, great presentation and thank you both very much for the update.
Yep. Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thanks again. And we'll keep in touch.
Yep. Stay well.
Ed, you had nothing to say or should we just leave you with your pretty picture?
No, I'm fine.
And I see we had Dave Young as well. You wish to comment or you don't have a pretty picture, so.
Do I have a picture up there?
Ed doesn't, but you wish to speak?
No, no, I'm fine.
Okay.
Very good presentation.
Thank you. We'll move on then. The next item on the agenda is update on EPW Spring Projects. I asked Link to informally, I didn't ask for, as he said in the email, to make a, give us a lot of information, but you know, we've been so this because of the flu and so on, we're all looking at spring and hoping the town looks as pretty as we expected. As I asked Link through Joe, if he would give us an update of where we stand and I guess at this point catching up. Link?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Not that this will buy you anything at Dunkin' Donuts, but I actually worked those bag, those cranberry bogs on Bank Street when I was in high school, working for Cobham Crow, who used to own those. And when I drive by and sing left to row naturally, I'm very happy to see something happen with those. Ask for an update on spring projects. A major spring project we have going, and I've got tentative dates on everything here, is Lower County Road. The work that we've been waiting for to happen. Robert Hour is our drainage contractor and they are scheduled to begin drainage systems on May twenty-sixth. That's the day after Memorial Day. Dirt Works is going to, is scheduled to begin patching on June first. That work's anticipated to take approximately five days. And this, or formerly Seal Coating Inc., is our crack sealer. And that's supposed to begin on June tenth. And that'll last approximately three days. Allstate Asphalt is the chip seal contract and they are scheduled for June twentieth, and that should be concluded in one day. Obviously, we'll have Markings Inc. in after that work is concluded to strike the project. And all of those contracts, except for Robert Hour being a drainage contract, is under the county road bids. After Robert Hour finishes, Lower County Road Drainage, which is three drainage systems, they'll be moving on to our miscellaneous locations, which we do annually. We have just engaged or just scheduling the long line painting that you see all your renewed annually. We're trying to get on the schedule for that. And we're also trying to get on the schedule to have parking lines, stop bars, crosswalks, et cetera, with that separate contractor, which is Parking Lines Inc. As far as highway, regular ongoing work, not so much spring projects, we are behind the eight ball due to COVID-19. This week is all hands on deck in the cemeteries, backing of town buildings, memorial squares, everything. We will do our very best to get that concluded this week. Usually it is about a seven-day process and we are literally putting everybody we have with a weed whacker in your hand or a lawnmower. I'm trying to get that all set. Unfortunately, we're not in a position to have mulch spread, which usually, you know, helps beautify the town, makes everything look pristine. We ordered mulch today. That'll be in after Memorial Day and we'll start on that as soon as we get the delivery. The surf rank that cleaned the rigs to beaches and you get a lot of positive feedback on how pristine it looks. It looks like you're on a beach in Florida. Unfortunately, that is down currently. We have ordered some parts and hopefully we'll have that tow vehicle up and running later this week and get to the beaches before this weekend. We'll do our very best to make that happen. Today, we redeployed our eighty-plus trash cans to our beaches, parks, cemeteries, bike trail. And we'll be resuming the normal trash pickup that happens. We started street sweeping last week. Usually a late start on that. Usually we try to have that concluded by August. It's going to probably run into September. And for reference, we have a hundred and forty-two miles of public roads, which is four hundred and eighty-two roads. Some other ongoing work that we do as staffing permits is catch basin cleaning. We simply don't have enough staff to have that rolling all the time, but we'll do it as we can and catch basin repairs.
Yeah, thank you, Link. Thanks for the update on what your staff is doing as well as what the subcontractors are doing. Has there been any conversations with the town administration or the chairman or both on possibly delaying? And what about delaying any of this work that we subcontract out based on what could be a very serious financial state for the town of Harwich?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No. However, all of that work I stated is coming out in contracts that have already been approved and we will get full reimbursement for.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else for Link? Okay, Link, perfect. That's what I just wanted, where we stand and how we can look forward to, I hope, a great summer, more or less.
We certainly hope so, Mr. Chair. We do our best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is vote to approve the interim town administrator's recommendation to grant request of EndStar Eversource for the purpose of installing approximately forty feet of conduit and cable in one handle in town road to provide electrical service to customer at twenty-two Central Avenue.
Barry. I move that we approve the interim town administrator's recommendation to grant permission request of EndStar slash I move that we approve the interim town administrator's recommendation to grant permission request of N Star slash ever source for the purpose of installing approximately forty feet plus minus of conduit and cable on and one handhole sixty-five three A in the town road to provide electrical service to a customer at twenty-two Central Avenue.
Second? Thank you, Steve. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Is that all? Yes, uh, Ed, please.
Uh, Joe, did, did we hold, uh, the, uh, ungrounding hearing on this?
I'm sorry, say again, please.
Did we, uh, uh, hold the normal, uh, public hearing?
Well, we, we did a new normal. Uh, as you'll see in the packet, we did, uh, teleconference dial in. Uh, uh, you've got the minutes in your materials there. We had the trustee from the property owner, as well as, uh, Jessica Elder from, uh, Henstar, and then staff and myself. So we, we did the notice and everything else.
Great.
So you're okay, Ed?
Yes.
Any other, uh, Don, you wish to comment?
Both.
Okay. I'll take a roll call vote in. Ed, I'll start with you.
All right.
Steve?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it's, uh, passed. Thank you, Joe, for bringing that forward. Uh, we're back to old business, and I think at that point, uh, Michael, you had a couple of questions you wish to, uh, uh, bring back at this point. Regarding the reopening advisory issues.
Sorry, I didn't have my mic on. Has anyone, um, spoken to Cindy from the chamber in regards to beach sticker sales and whether or not the Chamber of Commerce has, uh, made provisions? They were the only, uh, person we had last year that sold stickers seven days a week to the beaches.
No, I was waiting for the guidelines today, uh, the discussion with staff, but that's part of the, um, to be determined. So based on what we've gone through today and a follow over there, Eric, I'll be doing that either tomorrow or Wednesday.
Hi, ma'am. This is Amy.
Amy? Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, we did sell stickers seven days a week while the community center was open, which was from the second Monday in June until about the third week of July. And then Cindy was the only option there for seven days a week. But I have not, I was going to reach out to her tomorrow to see what her feelings were about selling them this year.
Great. Thank you, Amy.
Sure.
And thanks for the qualification on Sundays. Um, next was, um, material in the packet, uh, from MMA, uh, guidelines on special events. Uh, are we taking that up tonight? Uh, and I'm just thinking about Cranberry Harvest Festival, Wednesday nights in the port. Is that something we bring up later, or is that something we're talking about as part of this?
So it was, yeah, it was meant as placeholder. Uh, the reason why I included that is the, um, MMA presented, uh, late last week to the governor's reopening advisory board. Uh, we got an email over the weekend that the, uh, governor, um, and the, the, um, reopening board are still working through this presentation. So we expect to see, um, more discussion. I've got a call, as do all managers and administrators tomorrow afternoon, with the lieutenant governor to follow up on this. So this was really a placeholder first to let the board know where the MMA was coming down on this. Um, I don't expect that we would need to get into this specifically going forward, but rather that we'll see elements incorporated throughout the remaining guidance documents.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. And then, uh, just a final comment. Um, you know, Joe mentioned after Sarah spoke about, uh, guidance versus, uh, orders uh, and mentioned misquoting. I don't think he misquoted it at all, but I do, I, I think that this, there's a lot of pent up anxiety about what's going on, and and I think that there is no right decision to make at this point. But people want to use the beaches, people want to come to the Cape, and our businesses desperately need them. And I hope that the board takes the guidance, but also really thinks through, uh, the needs of our business owners and residents. Uh, and and I know we have to weigh that, but, uh, I think that we need to be involved in every step of the way on that as far as the guidance goes and and what we do for beaches and businesses. Uh, we did talk about briefly about restaurants, uh, and what we were going to allow them to do or not allow them to do. Um, as far as outdoor seating goes, and we did also talk about A B C C and guidelines. And I know in Boston that they're making several concessions, and the boards and some of those putting to give, you know, up to thirty days of one day licenses because people would be operating outside of the A B C C plans. So now they're making concessions, mayors, uh, and whatnot are making concessions and allowing for one day licenses for outdoor space. But this needs to be a conversation that we have sooner than later and try and give some relief. And Sarah said that's one of the sectors that's being hit the hardest.
Thank you, Michael. I agree that, uh, and I, I think, uh, in the term of guidance, even though there may be my hope is, is that the, uh, guidance coming out from the State House uh, gives us enough flexibility to take on some of the creative ideas that you've talked and Joe's mentioned that we, when we move forward. So we'll, uh, put this on. I think, uh, Joe, we'll keep this as a standard uh, moving forward of how, how we're, uh, dealing with not only health, which is critical, but, uh, our business community. So I appreciate that, Michael. Other, uh, comments, Don?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I've got, just to bolster what Mike was saying, uh, and I, I spoke with a number of restaurant owners over the last week, uh, most lately yesterday. Um, it doesn't appear that this is a whole hell of a lot different than what I'm hearing from the National Restaurant Association, but, uh, there, there are at least a few of them iconic restaurants in Harwich that are considering just going bankrupt and closing. So I mean, there is an urgency to this, uh, uh, wha- whatever, uh, is going on with the, whether it's a guidance or an order. Uh, we got to figure out some way to safely do some things, or we're going to wind up losing po- possibly twenty-five percent of, uh, the destination points. And these are real people. I mean, most of these people live either here or very close to here. So they, again, the, the tourists aside, the restaurants really need to have somebody speaking for them.
Thank you, Don. Joe will, uh, that ends it for the old business, and this is obviously something we'll bring back every, every week to try to do whatever we can.
Larry?
Uh, Ed?
Yeah, you know, uh, Mike, uh, brought it up, uh, uh, earlier, and, uh, as you, many of you know, it's of particular interest to me, uh, getting some, some, uh, guidance on, uh, some of the special event issues, uh, specifically around the Cranberry Festival, uh, uh, normal programs. Um, it's, we're having a lot of our, craft people, other people that participate, uh, um, are, are, are getting more and more concerned about how, what sort of plans to make. So, um, if we could, uh, see if we can push along some guidance from whoever is giving it on, on those sorts of events, uh, would be very helpful.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, sounds like Joe's trying to, or, or do you try to contact each of these subcommittees to get answers to your questions?
Well, it's, it's actually much broader than that, but, um, to try and tie together what I've just heard. First, I want to talk about, uh, restaurants. So we had a Cape and Allen's man, Cape and Allen's managers call on Thursday. We heard from one of the managers who was tied into one of those subgroups for the governor, where they have, uh, revealed that the A B C C is partnering with the Mass Restaurant Association. Um, I was very encouraged when I heard that because that is literally the regulator in business with the regulated, uh, business. So the fact that they're partnering to come up with solutions to benefit restaurants is a very encouraging sign. Uh, and if it's something as quick and easy as one days or expanding the premises without requiring, uh, A B C C approval, that gives the board, as the licensing authority, uh, tremendous, uh, uh, ability to turn things around as soon as we hear on that. So that was for restaurants, for outdoor activities, and and to tie back to what you're saying, Larry. We have regular calls with, um, Department of Public Health. As Representative Peak mentioned, even though the governor and the lieutenant governor have been driving this, they're driving it through, uh, D P H. And about a month and a half ago, D P H opened up their local boards of health calls to administrators and managers. So it's allowed all three of us, D P H, boards of health and directors, and administrators and managers to tie together at once. The good news is, we have the D P H call tomorrow where they're going to go through, uh, anything. And I'm looking at my board here, uh, any and all outdoor recreation activities. And so we're very hopeful that we'll hear about, uh, sports camps, day camps, summer camps, and other events such as Cranberry Festival and things like that, uh, through the, through the call tomorrow where they work us through what the governor and his administration have recommended. So, uh, we don't, we don't reach out only because it happens every day. Uh, this week is going to be the most unusual because we're expecting documents. I think I counted upwards of eighteen documents that were released today. Um, obviously dove into, uh, beaches as the first one. Was hoping to see something on restaurants, didn't get that yet, but, um, it's, it's going to be coming fast and furious. So we will continue to have these on your agendas. We expect to have a more detailed beach plan now that we have guidance and are working on sticker sales and all of that. And, um, I would imagine we're going to be doing these discussions right on through phases one, two, and three.
So, Joe, if I may, I'm, I'm curious, uh, is, is a nice, uh, uh, line, if you will, from D P H going down. Is there a parallel, uh, operation on the economic side of things? On, 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 you know, the whole money finance of it that we're all, we're all concerned about?
Uh, that I've only heard through, uh, through our legislative delegation. As Representative Peak mentioned, when I talked about the revenue reports for the state, um, I had heard on a call with the lieutenant governor several weeks ago that they a, a very important revenue report. Uh, since then, by my count, they've had at least five very important revenue reports. So that's still top of the house. It hasn't rolled down yet, but that's more through administration and finance and the legislature.
Yeah, I think it'd be good, uh, parallel, uh, concerning your operation on the, how to help the business survive through opening your helpers on, along with the safety side of things, but that's a discussion for another day. Uh, anyone else have a comment on this question?
If I may, on the, on the beach report coming next week, um, could we include the police chief in that, uh, conversation? As I don't believe beach monitors, um, are going to be effective all the time with what's, uh, seemingly a growingly impatient crowd of people that opened and want to, want to not social distance so much. But I think it'd be, yeah, from the police chief.
Understood, and we have included public safety in our conversations every step of the way, and we'll continue to do so.
Not necessarily the police chief, but representative to the police department.
Sounds like we have a vocal selectmen on, on the call. Joe will move next to town administrators' report.
So there are actually, uh, four items, two of which you see on the agenda. The first was, um, that I received regarding the Barnstable County Home Consortium renewal. Um, uh, Rennie Hammond, uh, home program manager had sent me the documents. Um, uh, couldn't get them on for the last agenda, so as you see in the packet, um, if the board wishes to continue in Barnstable County Home Consortium, which I would imagine we do, then no action is necessary. But if the board is, uh, considering getting out of the consortium, we would have to add it to a future meeting for discussion and then say, take certain actions. So I put that in there for the board's information, but if the board wants to have this as a broader discussion, uh, we can get into that in detail on the twenty-sixth.
Then we have a comment, question? Don?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just want to, uh, underscore what, uh, Joe said. As you correctly identified, Mr. Chair, uh, I signed it in two thousand and five, uh, as chair of the board. And, uh, given the fact it's going from the nineties and it, it essentially deals with HUD grants and, uh, rehabilitation, I'm going to slide into a different role here. Uh, as the chair of the housing trust, uh, I urge you just let it self-renew because, yeah, not large money, but still it's not our money. Uh, it's a mechanism to get it.
Thank you, John. My, uh, you mentioned my name on the, uh, saying you signed it. Do you think we have an idea of what, uh, the money's been contributed through some time period of what our managing fund is? Just, uh, just curious.
For rehab for rentals, primarily, and it's from HUD.
Okay.
All right.
Uh, who's, uh? Ed, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ed.
Over the course of time, we, we've received directly in Harwich several small grants to help with, uh, a lot of the pre-planning, uh, activities on some of our, uh, um, uh, housing, uh, programs, uh, the, uh, the program that we funded, um, where we built a couple of houses that, uh, on single lots around town, um, that people, uh, qualified for. Um, uh, and, uh, uh, they, uh, provided some of the initial planning, uh, site investigation, uh, work on those sort of things. So it's a very useful program for, uh, small pots of money to do, uh, with sort of a pre-planning work on, on, uh, a number of different housing programs.
Thank you, Ed. Uh, I think unless I hear objection, we just will let this stand. Okay, Joe, I think that's your, uh, no one seems to object. We'll just let this go and we will automatically renew, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, next item is just, um, a standard that I, um, established back in my late fall with the board, and that is to advise you of any contracts that I execute that are twenty-five thousand dollars or less. The one that you see in your packet is for Hubtech. Uh, this contract comes about conversations with, uh, Foster Banford, Lieutenant Scott Tillsley and Detective Mark Harris, talking about their, uh, their need for additional I T support. Uh, what happened in late fall, early winter is the, uh, individual, the independent contractor they were relying upon um, abruptly quit, and we had no recourse. So I suggested that we look at, um, opportunities that are, um, have already been vetted. Uh, Hubtech and, uh, one other vendor responded. They're both on the, um, state contract list. So the procurement process went exceedingly smooth and uneventful. So Hubtech is providing additional I T services in the short term that were, uh, needed by the, um, the quitting of the independent contractor. Um, I will be updating the board next week on, uh, an M V P grant extension for twenty thousand dollars. Uh, as you know, Charlene's been working on that project. Um, she, um, has a need for us to extend the, um, the process that we're going through for the grant. So we've, uh, filed the paperwork and asked for the extension, and they'll, uh, they'll grant us an additional year under that. But I'll have more details on the M V P grant that I executed as well. Um, next item, the CARES Act money that, uh, Selectman McCaskill had mentioned before.
Is, uh, is Hubtech providing for, excuse, there, can you give us some, you know, clarify that a bit?
Yeah, so really what they're looking to do, and my understanding is the independent contractor, uh, was somebody that had expertise. was somebody that had expertise in, in more of the infrastructure needs. So not the day-to-day operations of, you know, any of the work that our, our three IT people do, doing public safety, one in general government. This is more helping them with redundancy building, trying to move things from tape-based to cloud-based and really just ensuring that we have ongoing infrastructure that we the safety of the network.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Let me go back again. So the CARES Act money, that was information that was released. We got the information from Representative Peak on Thursday. It was released through her by the House Ways and Means Chairman. And it is the allocation of CARES Act money that is available. So as I mentioned before, and as Selectman McCaskill confirmed, the town of Harwich stands to gain $1,069,000 in CARE Act reimbursements. It requires paperwork from the chairman, so I'll be updating you on that, Larry, later this week. Very positive development and, and it's a nice solid number for Harwich. So more details on that will be coming this week and more detailed information on the 26th. We just couldn't put it into, to this packet based on the timing.
Okay, thank you.
Last in your doc, in your package, you see that there was a, an issue on the seaside shack inspection. I'm pleased to report that our building commissioner updated me this afternoon that he was able to perform the required annual state inspection. There are some minor deficiencies as well as the payment of the inspection fee. However, the building commissioner indicates that he feels that the regulatory compliance section of the common victual's license has been satisfied and he has signed that, that form. And that has been signed off by building, health and public safety at this point. So that appears to be concluded.
Good, good, thank you, Joe.
And that is my report.
Scott, do we have anyone that's called in or emailed you asking to speak? You said we do not, right?
We do, that's correct, we do not.
Okay, well, we've had a large participation, so I think we've probably handled that. Then we move then to Selections Report. Michael, I'll start with you.
It just, maybe Joe could give us a brief update of the, how the employees are doing going back to work on a more full-time basis with more people in the buildings, not, not just Town Hall, but Community Center, Library, anyone else that's going back to work so far?
So generally speaking, I think people are doing well with it. Obviously, you know, we've got directive on social distancing, cleanliness, hygiene, masks and all of that. As we've talked about retrofitting in several of the buildings. You know, the anxiety obviously is going to be around when we're able to receive the public. And I was encouraged by some of the guidelines today because the way that the governor was talking about for businesses, I think it will give employees comfort that when we have the general public returning, it's in a, it's in as safe and orderly fashion as possible. We're still several days, if not a week or two away from as many employees back as can be done because of childcare issues and family care issues, but I think we're trending very well. And that is a testament to, to everybody that worked on the, the changes for retrofitting and everything else. So we're getting there, but as we get into new phases, we're, we're going to be mindful of concerns.
Thank you for that. And I, and just not, no answer required obviously tonight, but given the email we all got from the DPW director for the overtime at the dump this week and our past conversations about reallocation of staff, hopefully that conversation is happening so that we're not paying overtime. I think we need to limit that in every single department. And certainly with police and fire, I don't think we have too much control over that, but we do in the DPW and hopefully you'll work on that. But thank you, thank you for the update and thank you for every, thank all employees for what they're doing.
Thank you, I'll pass it along.
Thank you, Michael. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like to echo what Mike just said about thanking Joe and all the employees for toughing this out and coming to where we're at. Couple of things, first of all, I alluded to this before, I'm the chair of the Housing Trust and we had taken, we had kind of pulled back over the last couple of months because the one thing that we had not done was we had not developed a plan of action, even though we were accruing money. And I'm not a big, a big fan of spending money before you know what you're trying to do. So we had a contractor that was going to be out soliciting public opinions and workshops. We had various stakeholder workshops that we were going to do. Personally, I didn't think, neither than some of the members of the trust think that it was going to be useful to continue on with that particular aspect of things. Because you only get one shot at starting correctly and creating a pathway to what you're trying to do. So we're holding a meeting this week to get our toes back in the water again. It's at two o'clock, the same provisions we made for as this meeting where there's a way to call in. And it's going to be on YouTube, channel 19, which I appreciate Jamie setting up and Joe setting up. So the meeting at this point is primarily going to be about where we're at and what we want to do as we move forward. I know there's going to be some, some conversation about what we do about a housing coordinator because that's under contract, but I'll get back to you folks with that later on. Again, Thursday at two o'clock. Speaking of guidance that was in emails, or speaking of emails in general, we're not acting on it and I'm not sure what happened, whether the, whether the person said or whether we just didn't want to move forward on it. But some weeks ago, we got an email requesting dockside to put a canopy over the, the deck. Not wanting to get into that, if we could just make sure that's in a packet at some point see, you know, the actual email because that's, that's a public document.
Sure, we can follow up with that.
Okay, that, that's all I have. Again, I just thank everybody for all the extra effort they're putting through and I wish good shakes, Godspeed.
Thank you, Don. Steve?
Just echo Mike and Don's, thanks to everybody in the, who works in the town. And that's it, nothing else.
Okay, Ed?
Yeah, well, two things. One, I guess my role is involved at the Cranberry Festival. Jenny Hewitt reached out to me with the plans of beginning to have the library open up somewhat with curbside distribution. She asked if the Cranberry Festival would loan the library some of these orange traffic control stations that we have, we have quite a number of them to help create to manage a flow of people. And we'll be doing, doing that this week and helping them set that up. And the, the other thing is apparently I, I had to earlier in the meeting step off to involved in a, a conference call on a campaign that I'm involved with that goes to ballot tomorrow and missed a couple of the items and I want to apologize for that. I didn't think the call was going to take terribly long, but it, as is most often the case, things go longer than you expect. And I want to congratulate you all for doing the wise thing of approving the appointment of our new fire chief.
Thank you for that, Ed. I think in the future, if you could just give me a signal that you're going to leave for a little bit.
I should have, but I really didn't think it was going to be a long.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's fine. Ed, can I ask you, I think you attended
Actually, I, I missed it, the, but I did circle back. The superintendent presented a very straightforward and position of the finances of the district outlining some of the things that they're looking at and will be putting on the table to meet the falloff in revenues that we all are facing. We'll get a, a report of the specifics prepared to you, to give, to present to you. But he was, I think, very straightforward in, in, in coming to grips with the significant financial impact this is going to have and that the school committee is going to have to step up and do its part in helping us all make it through. So I was very encouraged by it.
Thank you, Ed. We're all on the same gold, I think, Don?
More on that, I, I just, Ed, did you get an indication? Because we've got a near-term problem too of this fiscal year as well as next fiscal year. And the falloff in revenue that you alluded to is really a flow through from the two towns for the most part. So I'm just worried, you know, that they recognize that we need some help in this fiscal year too because I'm hoping that their expense structure went down somewhat while the schools were closed.
Yes, they do.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Think I'm last then. I'll remind you that our meeting next week is on Tuesday, Monday's Memorial Day. And secondly, we have an executive meeting is Wednesday. It helped me out, two o'clock, is that correct?
One o'clock.
One o'clock, Wednesday. And if there's nothing more, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second, again.
Okay, moving second, I'll take a roll call, Michael?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Who am I missing? Steve?
Ed, aye.
Ed, Mr. Ed, sorry, and I'm an aye. And Joe, I agree with everyone else, good job and we'll see you in a bit.
Thanks, folks.